American Rescue Plan Fund acceptance. Are there any further comments? If not, we'll call for a vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidriksen.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Phil. Item six.
RFA 171-21, Contract for Disaster and Cost Recovery Consulting Services with Phillips Smith Haines County Administrator.
Good morning. So this is the second item on the same topic. So as I mentioned in discussing the resolution that the commission just adopted, we are receiving this funding directly from the US Treasury rather than through the state. In addition, more of the standard federal guidance applies to these funds than applied to the coronavirus relief fund that we dealt with last fall. So for those reasons, I feel like we really need additional guidance. As somebody who works with federal funds on a routine basis, and particularly in the disaster recovery space. And so we issued a request for proposals this spring to try and secure someone who does this type of work. We were pleased to receive five different proposals, all from very reputable firms. Three of those firms had worked with Kansas counties on the coronavirus relief funding. And so we followed up with those Kansas counties regarding reference checks. And Michelle Barkley and I ranked all of the proposals according to the criteria in the request for proposals and came up with our top two and invited those folks for video interviews. And following that, we are recommending that we contract with iParametrics. iParametrics is a firm that, as I said, is involved in disaster recovery at the federal level and did assist Finney and Seward counties with their coronavirus relief funding. Got very high marks from those communities. They've been extremely responsive to our requests for follow-up information. So I look forward to a good working relationship with them. Recommend the contract for your approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions by the commission?
One question. Their fees, are they eligible to come out of that funding?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes. We don't intend to pay them if they're not. In the coronavirus relief fund, it was specified that 5% of the funding could be used for administrative purposes, including contracts like this. The guidance that's been released on the American Rescue Plan Act so far does not specify a percentage, but there is a sort of general federal rule of reasonableness. And the federal guidance does specify that you can use the funding to perform staff tasks, including by extension through use of consultants. So we do intend to, you know, pay for this, the cost of this contract out of the funding that we receive. I will say, iParametrics also, in their conversations with us, gave us some examples of how they were able to cover some of their costs in other counties from other federal sources in addition to the CRF. So there may be a potential to claim some of this through FEMA public assistance as well and not have to dip as deeply into the ARPA funds.
Thank you.
Good question. Commissioner Wees?
I assume county councils reviewed this.
He has, and as a result, we did make one change, and iParametrics was fine with that.
Okay. Any other comments?
The thing that I like about these is that there is no cost to implement these programs from the county budget. And for us to get in the way of accepting the money would be a mistake or accepting the fact that these people are going to help us on how to measure this contract. So I'm in favor of it.
Okay. Any members of the public who wish to speak? We'll bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we enter into the contract with iParametrics.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 171-21, Contract for Disaster and Cost Recovery Consulting Services. Any further questions? If not, we'll call for the vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidriksen.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Phil. We will move into informational items. Item one.
2022 Budget Appropriation Request by Salina Community Economic Development Organization with Mitch Robinson, Executive Director.
Good morning, Mitch.
I'm Mitch Robinson.
Okay.
I'm Lloyd Davidson. I'm the chairman of the Economic Development.
Good morning, Lloyd.
Board, and your representative on the board and have been for since the beginning. Was thinking about that a little bit. We actually started meeting about nine years ago, trying to get an organization together that would play nicely together to try to create better jobs and more jobs. So I'm just here to support Mitch, and I'll shut up.
Okay, thank you, Lloyd. Good morning, Mitch.
Good morning. Remember that, Phil, when we had that discussion at our next board meeting. So I appreciate my chairman coming and being with us today, and we're going to work through this pretty quickly. I know you all have got a long agenda, but it's my pleasure to be here. It's hard to believe that the organization has been around as long as Lloyd mentioned. It was December of 16 when I moved here from southeast Missouri to start the organization up. And we've had, it's been interesting, several years to say the least, with COVID having an impact. And but let's get started with the slides. Let's go on over to the first slide. Those of you all, several of you all were there for the ribbon cutting and open house, really the announcement of One Vision Aviation coming out to the airport. It was an exciting day. Senator Moran was able to come in and make some remarks and welcome Jim Sponder to Salina. At that point, we had, you can go ahead, next slide. We had some targeted numbers of where we were going to be going. Little did we know, at that time, the state, the world, was going to be upended with the COVID virus having a major impact on all of us. The building, you all know, Big Bertha, the biggest hangar at the airport. It's 128,000 square feet. If you go by there today, you see, I think this morning I counted, I don't know, a dozen aircraft that's under work. During this time, Jim had high hopes for their operation moving quickly, and they were up to about 100 people when the virus came in. You can go to the next slide, please. And we ended up getting to a point where he was right at 50. And then we started, unfortunately, going down toward 30. And at that point, Jim was able to really turn his business on a dime, pretty much, to get into more of a hands-on with clients, companies that needed their success story, really. And Jim Sponder has been a great person to have into the community. He's now, we're back up to the 250 employee target number that he felt like he would be able to get to. Little did we know, it was going to take a little bit longer. But his successes have been very strong. He has brought a large number of people into the community, aviation experts, mechanics, as are known A&amp;Ps, airplane and power plant mechanics. And a lot of those folks have moved here and set, put down roots as they move ahead. And where he sees us going is that 450 number is still his target, and he believes that that'll be occurring. So go ahead, next slide, please. One more. So this is his comment, a recent story. The doors are open for hiring right now, and he is very serious about that. They've been literally having people bunking in people's couches and sleeping over to find places for some of these new mechanics to live at here in the community. Go ahead, next slide, please. And then August came along, August 2020. As you all know, most of you all were there that day. The governor was here making the announcement with the Swans management team. And we had, I think it was about 95, close to 100 degrees that day. So it was not the greatest day to be outside, but it was successful. The picture you see on the right-hand side is the drawing layout of the new plant. And I encourage, if anybody has not been out to see the construction, I would highly recommend it because the building structure is going to be done fairly quickly. The pre-tilt, the concrete tilt-up panels are being shipped here from Kansas City and being erected on the site, and it's almost complete. And we'll soon be seeing the metal roofing panels and the infrastructure related to that roof go into place. So go ahead, next slide. This is, for those of you all who recognize that dark rectangular shape is the building, the new 400,000 square foot. This is two new production lines will be going inside that rectangular building. And there's tremendous amount of site work that is still going on, drainage work, street improvements. Go ahead, next slide, please. And what we're looking at is, as you all know, a $600 million investment. The building's 400,000. We were very fortunate with Senator Moran's assistance, able to get roughly 3.8 million in a federal economic development administration grant that'll go toward street improvements and ditch improvements along Centennial Ditch. So as you all know, there are flooding issues, the way the water comes off the airport. That's now going to be all diverted. There's a large retention basin that's constructed on the south end of where the building, the new building is going. So that'll be all retained, and then will be slowly fed out to Centennial Ditch and into the drainage that way. Also, we were able to get through Kansas Department of Transportation the $2.1 million highway, street assistance program. And that, again, is going to help with. There'll be some additional turning lanes. There'll be what they call stacking lanes, where the trucks will be able to come off of Centennial. And those trucks will be able to go into the new area where the storage and the freezer warehouse complex will be built there south of the former hospital. You see your job numbers, retention of the 1,200 that we currently have at Swans, which is a tremendous number. And then we get into the roughly 225 jobs over the second and third year. And these are positions that are above average, above our county average of over 17 an hour or so. We're excited about that. The quality of these positions will be such that the positions will be some of the best-paying jobs there at the plant. Currently, their entry-level wage is around 13, 25, 1350, depending on the shift. And this will be much higher than that, so. So that same week, we can go on the next slide. Same week, I've never been doing this for 30. There's a picture of the construction that's going on, that's coming off of the airport terminal. So if you get out there, you know, there's been a lot more done since then. But go ahead, next slide. And this, again, this is talking about the panel construction, but a very unique, quick 509 panels, that's a story there. So it'll be part of the construction. Go ahead, next, please. So then, I've been doing this over 30 years. I've never had two announcements in the same week. So it was quite unusual that Great Plains decided they were ready to move forward. This has been another exciting project for the community with the acquisition of the former Phillips Building, Signify Building. This end of July, Great Plains will be taking over the building. And they have been working with their team from Japan to already modify and get that building up to speed for the new construction. And we're talking about the loaders that are there in the picture there. They have construction industry list of equipment that's being made in Japan currently. This is all going to be brought to the United States. They're going to compete against others in that same industry segment. And they feel very comfortable that Kubota will be able to go up against most of your Bobcats and other equipment on the track loader industry. So we'll start seeing more of those here in the United States in the next several years. Next, please. And then here's your numbers, your investment numbers on this project. It was $53 billion. As we said, it's 750,000 square feet. The July 1 acquisition of the building. And then they're looking in December of '24 to have it up and going. But first, we're basically looking at 130 new jobs during the first three years. Over $26, $27, you'll see the averages there on our chart. And then year four, there's going to be more. There'll be additionally, additional positions brought in from Japan and outside the country. So we're very fortunate that Great Plains has a terrific relationship with Kubota, their owner, and they're able to bring these new jobs in. Okay, let's move ahead, want to try and get this done. Here's just some additional pictures from that day, which was a fun day. We had state officials over from Topeka. Next. Okay, so we've had traditionally, our goals were attraction of new industry to the community and then entrepreneurship. So we were very fortunate to have several different local entrepreneurs come in. Our own commissioner here came and spoke and did an excellent job and appreciated him taking his time out to come and talk about, you know, how do you start a business? What's involved with entrepreneurship? So that continues to be one of our priorities. Unfortunately, because of the shutdown due to COVID, you know, we, like everybody else, had to go to working remotely. And we were able to continue to promote the programs via email, via Zoom, via all other mechanisms that were out there. So this was just one of the sessions we had at the Temple, which is where we've been having our meetings there. So next. It talks about the actual meetings we had. We do meet the first, I've been trying to meet the first Wednesday, and that'll be coming back in July 7, I believe, is the first date that we'll be back again. Okay, go ahead, next. This is some of our sponsors that's been involved in our startup program. Evergy, SS&amp;C, ISG, First Bank, those were our main sponsors. And then we've been able to work very closely with SCORE, Small Business Development Center, the Temple, obviously Dane G. Hanson Foundation's. Then their Economic Development Group out of Norton has been very, very helpful, very, very strong in terms of assistance. Next, please. When you start up an organization, you've got to have a plan. And this was pictures from our work with AD Advantage. Some of you all attended that session where we met with Janet AD, who is known nationally as one of the top consultants in the country, that put together our plan. We're in the process of modifying that right now. Next, please. And we've had targeted industries. Obviously, aviation is one of those that continues to be a strong point for us. Success we've had with One Vision. Metal fabrication continues to be a strong source, food production. So we've gotten a pretty strong targeted industry segments that we know what is best for, what appears to be best for our community, and that's what we continue to go after. Next. And we were very fortunate just to receive a grant from Evergy, our energy supplier, to come back and do an update with AD and move forward with that. And we'll have that at our next board meeting next month. We'll be approving that. Next. Okay, so we know what we've been working on. We've had some success. Where do we need to be going next? And I think if any of us look around and think about what is our priorities, this is what the board has met with. We've talked about what we've looked at. Housing, going back to workforce, where are we getting our workers from? How are they living here? How do we get them to move here? Housing is obviously one of the top issues. There are a couple of companies that are looking at putting in new facilities here, which we're very excited about, but it's a long process. This is going to be a multi-year effort to get the amount of houses constructed, the amount of units, either through duplexes, quadplexes, or higher-density units. That's going to be coming, and I think we've got a pretty good angle working on that. It's going to be a big change for the city and the county in the future. So but that's something that teamwork, I think we can bring all that together. But so housing is a critical item. Workforce development, childcare is another area that we're on the sidelines, working with the partners that have a role to play in that, and we're assisting them. Certified sites, we're going to be upgrading our website again. And then we're continuing to work with our entrepreneurial efforts, including this fall, we're going to be having a challenge, entrepreneurial challenge, to have people come forward with ideas on projects and see if we could possibly find funding for those companies. Okay, let's go to the next one. Okay, we have, this has been our budget page for going back to 2016. We have been very conservative on our spending. We've gone out and reached to the targeted marketing organizations that we work with to get advertising done. The county has been solid in their commitment to us. We have not asked, this would be our third year, our third segment, and we've, our second year, we did not come back for an increase. We kept at the $20,000 range. This year, due to spending, spend-down of our reserves, we feel like we have to come back to the county, the city, and the airport authority and ask for increases to cover the rising expenses we're seeing and also to expand into the programs that we want to reach out and use to attract new companies into the community. So we are, as the letter you have, we did ask for a $50,000 or total amount coming up from the $20,000 that we've had the last six years, so. I believe that's it. I will be more than happy to stand and answer any questions. I don't know how long it took me to run through here, but I'd be, like I said, more than happy to answer questions. We feel like we've got a good plan for the next three years. But it's always something that being able to pivot, change, make a change to different activities, which housing is definitely one of those. We'll continue to work with our economic development standard attraction. But again, we have to work on, you know, where are those workers coming from? And you talk to any manufacturer in the community, any businessperson in the community, as you all, we've talked about hiring of your all's staff as well. It's a major situation we have here. And it's not just here, it's everywhere in the country, so.
Okay, thank you, Mitch.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions by the commissioners? Thank you.
Anytime you have questions, please give me a call.
We know where you're at.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number two.
2022 Budget Appropriation Request by Saline County Fair Association with Carl Garten, board member.
Good morning, Carl.
Morning. I'm Carl Garten, representing the Saline County Fair Association. Our request is for $20,000 to continue having the fair with additional $10,000 requested there to help cover the youth events, such as the 4H activities and those things at the fair. We realized after last year's fair that we did during the COVID event, the actual cost of doing some of the, just the youth portion of that fair was more than what we had realized in the past. So that's the reason for those additional funds. I believe all of you have the information as far as the budget. I was informed that that had been provided to you. So if you have any additional questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those.
I don't have any at this time because it's like, it's a, it's a, it's a. It's ongoing, and it's been ongoing for a long time. There's certain things, and now that we've taken some of the items, like the stadium, out of the equation, and it's going to be a really hard situation coming down the road. And here where the county is providing some updates to the facilities over there to help maybe down the road that we can make it better for everybody that's coming to the fair. Yeah, so.
But we will lose, like you said, our additional funding. We'll, you know, Demo Derby will not be able to happen there, a few other events.
Yes.
Rodeo. This year, it doesn't look like we're going to have a carnival due to the visas for South African employees that he uses to rent his carnival. So interesting of all the things that this COVID and everything else has caused for problems, so.
Okay.
Carl, has the fair board reached an agreement with the city as far as the short-term leasing of the fairgrounds, of the rodeo grounds?
Right, we have. We will have it through this year's fair, and I believe we have until September 15 to clear that material off of there that you guys have grabbed over us. I was just sitting back there thinking, Roger, we probably need to decide whether there's any of those bleachers that you need for your exercise arena or whatever you're going to call that additional structure to the south of Ag Hall that you may want to keep, or, you know, so that we don't dispose of those someplace else before, you know, you have to purchase something new. So we may want to think about that a little bit before we get too far down the line.
Yep, okay. And I think that that's already been determined by our new expo director, but I would.
But he called me this morning. We visited for about a half hour on other items.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Thank you, and we'll look into this and hopefully we'll be able to help out.
All right, thank you.
Have a great day. Have a great day. Item three.
2022 Budget Appropriation Request by OCCK with Sheila Nelson Stout, President and CEO.
Good morning, Sheila.
Good morning.
And your co-part.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Okay. Well, good morning again, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here with you this morning to give an update about what OCCK has been doing for the last year. I have with me Pat Willarias, as you probably all know, and Susan Sprague. Pat is Chief Financial Officer for OCCK, and Susan is Vice President of Expansion Services for OCCK. So we're going to talk to you a little bit about what we've been doing for the last year and what services have been happening in your community. So the vision of OCCK has always been to provide an array of services for anybody with a short or long-term disability so that they can stay independent in their community. We continually look for ways, and we continually get requests from people to do different things. So as we hear needs arise from people, we try to respond to those needs and look at services that people ask for. In the last three years, we've expanded a lot of services. We've expanded services for people with Alzheimer's and dementia. We've expanded transportation services, services to kids with autism, services for people with brain injury, both traumatic brain injury and acquired, like a stroke or heart attack where you lose oxygen for a period of time, those kinds of things. We've expanded employment services to help people get jobs. We've expanded attendant care services because if you need help showering or those kinds of things, it's hard to find. We've expanded transition services for any type of transition, people going home from hospitals, nursing homes, kids leaving high school to come into the adult world. So we do a lot of work around transition services. Last year, we served 3,975 people, gave 258,000 rides in Celine County, and 493 people used the CAN Cycle Program in Celine County. We've increased the number of people we've served in Celine County from 1340 to 1636 in the last three years. We're up to 313 staff, 202 in Celine County, and we processed payroll for another 423 attendance. So we returned $14 million to the county of the funds that we have. So that's a great thing. A couple of things that I wanted to mention that are happening on a statewide basis that are great things for our area. The first is, we have been advocating for rate increases for people with developmental disabilities on that waiver. So as you know, there's 4,000 people in Kansas waiting for services on that waiver, and everyone is having a hard time hiring. So we've been advocating for the last several years. This year, we got an increase again from the state, a 5% increase for all providers in Celine County. So that's a wonderful thing. Most everybody, OCCK already has passed theirs on in a rate increase for direct service staff. The second thing that's a really good thing for our community, I believe, is the legislature passed a bill to look at crisis services for people who are struggling to stay in their homes and in their communities. So there is an allocation of funds, and the state will guide us and work with us through putting together crisis teams that would work across the state with people with disabilities, both mental health and developmental disabilities. So we'll be partnering with Mental Health Center for sure, and mental health providers across the state. But I think it's exciting. We have, you know, we're looking at rural model, and we're looking at urban models. Lots of times, you know, there used to be a lot of psychiatric support through hospitals. That has gone by the wayside pretty much. So now, if I'm struggling, I go to Larned, or I go to Parsons, or I go to Topeka State, but I have no support before, and I have no support when I get home. So those crisis services would allow teams of people, professional teams of people, to go in and help after someone gets home or before they leave. So it would look like we would work with local sheriffs, police departments, mental health professionals, and bring professionals that we would employ around that person to see if we could keep the person from having to go to another place or help them transition when they get home. So I think that's a wonderful thing. We've asked for that for many, many years, and I think it's great that it's coming. And then the other really good thing that the legislature did this year was they increased the amount of money that people could keep if they have Medicaid. So five years ago, you could only have $759 a month if you had Medicaid that you could keep and use for rent, utilities, food, all of those kinds of things. As you can imagine, you can't live on $750 a month. And so people lived in places that weren't very healthy. People didn't eat well. People couldn't get transportation. People couldn't buy clothes. Excuse me, lots of different things. So two years ago, that increased, excuse me, two years ago, that increased to $1,100, and this year it increased to $2,300. So that will really assist people in living in decent places, buying nutritional food, all of paying for services that they need. So those are great things. As you all know, I talked last year about, last year being our 50th anniversary at OCCK, and we certainly picked an interesting year to try to celebrate an anniversary. So we had money set aside for open houses and all of those typical things that you do at an anniversary, and we couldn't do any of those things last year. So what the ideas that staff came up with is to start a scholarship fund for people with disabilities to further their education. So we put $20,000 into a scholarship fund. We've since then had donations, which is wonderful. And just last week, we gave away, or we designated scholarships for five people to begin our scholarship process. So we had people asked to go to trade schools, to community colleges, to universities. And so we're really excited for that to get started and can't wait to see how people use that to further their education. So I'm asking for a 3% increase this year. We haven't had an increase for, I think, five years from Celine County. We, you know, we certainly try to do everything that we can possibly do with every penny we get to serve more people, and so we'll continue to do that. Now, I'll turn it over to Susan and Pat for some comments, and then I'll be glad to answer questions, or I can answer them now if you have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sheila.
Hi. Thank you for your time today. Good morning. I'm Susan Sprague. Sheila mentioned some different things that we've done to expand services in response to what people are requesting. And one of the things she mentioned was autism services. So in 2020, OCCK was approved, went through the approval process with the state to deliver autism supports for families. Then we went on, we got credentialed with the managed care organizations, went on to get credentialed with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. And as families come to us with different types of insurance, we'll credential so we can provide support to them as well. The autism supports are birth to age 21, and it's, they're complementary services to school supports for autism. So these are community-based. So it's working with moms and dads and young adults, evenings, weekends, again, to complement what would be provided in supports within the school system. So in addition to the autism services, we took a look at, we have continued our partnership with the University of Kansas Alzheimer's Disease Center. They have requested, and we are serving on their coalition. It is a group of folks. They asked us to be kind of a boots-on-the-ground voice, if you will, of rural, north-central rural Kansas and what families were experiencing. And also to ensure that if there were families, if there were caregivers, if there were families that wanted to participate in studies to help the University Disease Center learn more about struggles and whatnot that families might be having with Alzheimer's, dementia, that they were included, they had the opportunity to be included in those studies, which is important because there is a barrier of travel to go to Kansas City, to go to Wichita, that type of thing. So working to make sure that there isn't a barrier for that wish to participate. In addition to that work, that continued work with the KU Alzheimer's Disease Center, we took a look at, caregivers would say, you know, sometimes it's just hard, even without a pandemic, it's hard to get out and about to get someone to the doctor's office, for example. So we looked into tele-med, tele-health, what type of technology could possibly assist and would work in Celine County and small towns, wherever there may not be, or the family doesn't afford internet-type support. So it would work regardless of the family or the person having that support. It would just be contained within the unit itself. And so that's something that we began in 2020 as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Thank you.
It's good to see you all again. It's a different kind of feeling. As both Sheila and Susan pointed out, as you can tell, OCCK is a very diversified organization. We serve anybody with any type of disability. One of those services, of course, is general public transportation, which is something that we look at, is a very critical function to the communities we serve. It allows people to be independent, allows people to stay within the communities. And you look at survey after survey, and transportation is always one at the top on the list. How better is to keep someone independent without having affordable, accessible public transportation? We keep expanding our services. 2020, because of the pandemic, the shutdown period, we had to adjust some of our services, but now we're back, we're back, we're back at 100%. We have some really interesting plans that we're working with KDOT on to even improve our services, to expand our services. OCCK was the first in the state, and I think there's only three now that have a mobility manager. And what that mobility manager does, it coordinates services with the other providers so the whole general public transportation realm can be more efficient and more effective. Instead of buses crossing, this way we can kind of work with other providers. As you can tell, if you drive down Santa Fe, we're adding a 16,000-square-foot addition to our building, thanks to a grant from Kansas Department of Transportation and some funding support from the city of Salina. It's kind of, since I was involved with it from day one, in 2005, when we moved from our garage out on Schilling Road to transportation, the building was so big, you could hear, we could hear people echo. Of course, at that time, we weren't doing the fixed route service. We weren't doing a lot of the non-emergency medical transportation. But now, which is bulging at the seams, and this 16,000-square-foot addition is certainly going to, is certainly going to help us. I think one thing that public transportation is giving back to the community, not only affordable transportation, but we offered free rides for people to get vaccinated, which was very successful. We gave free rides to people to go vote this year, which is very successful. And we keep looking, again, at other things that make the service better, that make it more user-friendly, and expand our services with them. On the other side, as Sheila pointed out, we have, we can continue to grow, 300-plus employees. And we were fortunate in 2020, with everything going on, we did not have to furlough any employees. We did not have to lay off any employees. We served equal the numbers that we served in previous years. We did give employees an opportunity, actually a cash bonus, if they wanted to get vaccinated. And we had a lot of employees, I think that they got vaccinated anyway, but we had a lot of employees that took advantage of that. So it's, it was an interesting year. We did have some cuts in our funding due to, again, the lockdown where we couldn't go see people. But all in all, it was, it was a very good year. And a copy of our 2021 budget is included within the packet. You can take a look at that if you have any questions. So that's pretty much my presentation, unless you have any questions.
Okay.
Thank you, and thank you for your past support.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll take it in consideration. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Item number four.
2022 Budget Appropriation Request by North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging Incorporated with Julie Govert-Walter, Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
It's nice to be here in person again. Kelsey Fawnenstill, who's the Director of our Long-Term Care Services and Supports, is distributing our 2020 fact sheet, and we wanted you to have a copy of that. Also, she's distributing a brochure of our agency. I think there was information in your packet about our 2020, our 2022 request. So I just want to refer you to those items. The North Central Flint Hills is a private not-for-profit group that serves 18 counties in the heartland of Kansas. And of course, we're delighted to have one of three regional offices right here in Salina. You can see that, from the fact sheet, you can see the number of people who are over age 60 that reside here in Celine County as compared to the total population, right about 20% of Celine County is over age 60. You have about 730 people who are in the minority classification. And a lot of times, folks who are in that classification have some more significant health issues. And that's why, and under the Older Americans Act, which is a major source of our funding, we are to target those groups. And you'll also see that about, well, close to 6% of your 60-plus population here in Celine County have incomes below the poverty level. And that is another key population that we focus on in our work with our funding. And then I think that's very significant, that we have right around 27% of older people in Celine County who are living alone. And that's an important thing to remember about the folks that we are serving with money and in home services and meals. The next part of our fact sheet focuses on the county funding that we've requested from Celine County in the past. And in fiscal year 2022, you can see that we're requesting $22,171 in administrative money and $12,125 for support for the Senior Care Act. I will tell you that our Board of Directors, it's, we just don't make these numbers up. There's a formula, and we ask, and it includes the, it includes a total population of the county, the valuation of the county, the number of people aged 60. And that's how we come up with our funding requests. So it's not something that, that one of us makes up one morning and comes to you and says, oh, hey, we want this amount of money. I want to also mention that the fact sheet on the next page, you'll see the value of the services based on our calculations that we've have for all the services provided in 2020 to individuals living in Celine County. Right now, that total amount of services is $623,976. And that, when you take a conservative multiple, economic multiplier, that means that we've invested somewhere multiplier, that means that we've invested somewhere around $3.1 million of our, of services money here in Saline County. And it also points out on this fact sheet that there are 14 full-time equivalencies that are here in Saline County. And I just want to say that that's, that's a pretty big number in terms of our staffing. We don't have, we don't have that many people in our Emporio Office, and we have a few more in Manhattan. So, just to, just to give you a picture. Do you have any questions about our fact sheet or the services that our Area Agency on Aging provides here in Saline County?
No.
I, I also want to let you know that in the information that I provided, we are also making a special request. The special request is to help us defray some of our cost for COVID-19 expenditures. And also to, I guess I'll say, get on a even playing field in terms of some past dollars that were not provided to our agency. And this, this is because of a transition. I think we, I was here, I think, last year, the year before, asking for those dollars that we had requested from previous, the previous administration with Saline County that managed the funds at that time. And there was a transition challenge. We are, since we did expend and invest in Saline County in terms of during COVID-19, we're asking for a special request and consideration from COVID-19 monies that may be available in your county. That request is for $40,000. And again, to help us defray expenses that were incurred between March of 2020 and current. But we're also looking at this as a way to, I guess I'll say, catch up. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I know Kelsey Fawnenstill would be very happy to also answer any questions about long-term care services.
Okay. I'm good. Any other questions, comments?
Before I leave the podium, I do want to recognize Mr. Archie Riggs, who's a member of our Board of Directors.
Good morning, Archie.
Yes.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to item number five.
2022 Budget Appropriation Request by Salina Media Connection with Deborah Cox's Management Team.
I don't see her.
Okay.
I don't see Ms. Cox. I will say that I think there was information included in your packet.
Yes.
That they're essentially requesting to stay status quo because they weren't quite sure what was happening in the transition with the city of Salina. I did receive on Friday, after your packets went out, a letter from the city of Salina. And so, I'm sure we'll have further conversations about that as the budget progresses.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll move on to item six.
Commissioners' comments.
I would like to just tell the, my fellow commissioners that I did attend the first meeting of the Jail Reduction Task Force, the reorganized task force, I should say. And as a reminder, we started this five years ago, and in an attempt to decrease our population, as we were spending a million dollars a year sending housing inmates in other counties. And that committee ended up becoming a jail committee, which is fine, passed. But it, I think it was time for us to kind of reorganize and rethink this. And I think if we head down the same path that we have this last six or eight years, we'll fill up this jail, too. And so, we're looking at ways to move people through the system a little quicker, possibly find alternative punishments for low-level, nonviolent criminals. And I thought it was a very productive meeting, I'm excited about it. I think that you'll, you'll see some really innovative ideas come out of this. I want to say that, give a special shout-out to the county attorney and Jeff Ebel and his assistant, Alex Driscoll. They were there, and they need to be part of this. And they came, they just came the first day with an attitude of not why things wouldn't work, but how things can work. And so, the brainstorming session was very positive. Very, very excited to have Jack Shaahan on board here. We've never had a defense attorney. He brings just incredible knowledge of the system and, and what's bogging things down, taking people so long to get through the, through the process. And he was fantastic, too. So, just want to say, I'll keep you abreast of this, we're just gonna meet monthly for a while, and we'll just, we'll see what comes out of this. But very, very excited, and I think we, we finally have the right people at the table.
Okay. Thank you. Good information.
I'll quickly comment that I, Friday, attended the Advisory Board for the Senior Service Center. There was a lot of good discussion there. Many members were missing. I don't believe there was a quorum, so there wasn't any action being taken. But, but there was discussion on the service, the cost of the meals, some exciting news about grants that are being proposed. And I see Rosie is on our agenda to speak here. So, if you have any questions about anything that's going on there. But, but there was some positive input, and I think we'll see some continued improvements and better days ahead.
Okay. I will comment that I was at the, last Tuesday night, we had the Fair Board meeting. And pretty interesting, where they do have the control of the stadium through this year. So, there will be some events this year for the rodeo, the demolition derby, I'm pretty sure. And I think they're gonna have some, even bands. I think they're gonna have a few nights with some live entertainment. So, this year, knowing that this will be the last year of the stadium availability to the Fair Board, that they was kind of trying to make it kind of a, let's go out in a big style. So, and coming down, like they just said, that there will be no, I think the fair, the actual carnival will not be there. But there's a lot of other things happening, and looking forward to it. So, that's about it. Any other comments? Any announcements?
I have an announcement, Chairman. 2021 elections this year are for city-school elections. So, we have, all incorporated cities have positions that are open. We also have all the school districts that have positions open. The Central Kansas Extension District has board members. And then, we also have Dayton Drainage District also has board members up. The filing deadline is next Tuesday. It's June 1st at noon. So, I just want to let that people know that.
You said school board, but also city commission, correct?
Yeah, all incorporated cities.
All the corporate, okay.
Yeah, so does Sarajevo, Brookville, New Cambria, and Smallen also have positions available.
Okay. Any other announcements? Okay, we'll move into a study session. Item number one, Senior Services Advisory Council appointment. Rosie Walter?
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning, Rosie.
I am here seeking approval or recommendation for our vacant Advisory Council position. We have a member that is no longer able to serve right now. So, our Advisory Council did meet, and they went through the expression of interest that we have. We have four that, we did contact and see if they were still willing to serve. You can see those individuals. Our recommendation with the council is to appoint Rita Dyster to fill that position upon your approval.
I guess my comment would be, this is, this is a good and a bad, if you will. And that is that we've got four people that are willing to serve, capable of serving, and we, yet we only have one position to fill.
It's a good problem.
So, it's a tough, tough situation to tell these good people that are, that are volunteering for these positions that, sorry, we don't need you, when, when, when in essence, we really do need them. We want them to keep going. And I appreciate the fact that your board comes up with, with a nomination and a recommendation. But it, it bothers me to have to turn people away that are volunteering to do these things. So, but that's the, the nature of the business. The boards can only be so big and, and still be functional. So, thank you for giving us a recommendation.
I can't think of anybody better for this position.
I.
I mean, again, again, I echo Bob's comment. I'm not saying that the other three are not, but Rita would just be perfect for this, so.
Yes.
I assume this is a study session item?
Yes.
Then it will come back to us.
Yes.
Yeah, so I think the intent is, if the commission is good with that recommendation, then there would be a resolution next Tuesday.
Well, I'll echo Commissioner Shadwick. You know, Rita has worked hard with the Senior Center. She's involved in a lot of the projects that take place on there. So, I believe she'd be a good addition to that board. But I sure don't want to hold anyone back from keeping their names on that list because those openings do come up quite often.
And I would follow the stance where we're at with Rita, yes.
Proceed with the resolution.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Looks like we're going to go into executive. Can I get a recess for about three minutes?
I would love that, Mr. Chair, because I could use a recess as well. But following the recess, staff would request that we move into an executive session under the employer-employee negotiations exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for 20 minutes. And attendees, in addition to the commission, will be myself and HR Director Marilyn Lemmer.
Okay. So.
I would make that motion and reconvene in here at 11 o'clock. That gives us about 14 minutes here. Or, is that good enough? Yeah, that would give you your 20, yeah. Wait a minute, that's too many minutes.
10:50.
Too many minutes, I'm sorry. 11:50.
Yeah.
10:50.
10:50. We'll get it right in a minute.
Okay, yeah. Sounds good.
I don't expect anybody to second all of that.
I'll second, yeah, you can second that.
All in favor?
Yeah, you're guilty, too.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Aye.
Well, go into the executive session in three minutes.
Talk about clobbering it up. Talk about clobbering it up.